And good evening. Welcome to the May 28th Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting. No need to adjust your television sets or your YouTube settings. I am not Butch Campbell. The incomparable and incredible Mr. Campbell had a shoulder surgery today. I've last checked in with him and he is recovering quite nicely. I expect he's watching at home to make sure that I do this as best that I can. So, I ask for your indulgences as we sort of move forward. Tonight, I'd like to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And folks, we've got two rock star students that are going to help us out today. We've got Natalia Rouse right over here, and Jayce Fight right over here. They're going to come to the podium. In a moment, I'm going to ask everyone to stand, and we're going to recite the pledge, then we're going to have a moment of silence and brief reflection for the folks that have endured tragedy here in the county, as well as Butch Campbell's recovery. So, if everyone will stand, and my rock star kiddos, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, I have the, I have a great opportunity to welcome some board evaluators here for tonight. Although I'm told we're down to just one, it appears I've already scared one of you away. So, if we could get a nice Murfreesboro City School family welcome to Mr. Larry Tomlinson, I think that would be good for our evaluation. Let's give him a hand. But, but in all sincerity, it's such a great opportunity to see people that care about public education coming together to have discourse, to have discussion, to talk about things that matter and how they impact educators and children. So, this is an incredible opportunity for us, and we're very grateful that you're here with us. Don't let that affect your evaluation. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I believe you have seen a copy of the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We've got a motion from Ms. Moore.
Second.
Mr. Ballard, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there is none. The motion carries. It appears the required element of our agenda is going to be the director's contract extension with Ms. Lauren Bush. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. Pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 49-2-203, the first action item on tonight's agenda is the contract extension for the Director of Schools. Before we move forward with this discussion, I would like to provide an overview of the results from Dr. Duke's most recent evaluation. As you know, we conduct a comprehensive evaluation of our Director of Schools on an annual basis to ensure that we are meeting the district's goals and to provide feedback for continued improvement. This evaluation includes a review of various performance measures, feedback from the leadership team and our school principals, and an assessment of the overall progress of our schools. I provided an overview of these initial evaluation results to each board member at your desk. Based on the initial results, I'm pleased to report that Dr. Duke has received exceptionally high marks, earning a 4.96 out of 5 on the Administrator Survey and a 4.72 out of 5 on the Board Observational Data portion of the evaluation. As a reminder, we will not have the final score for Dr. Duke's evaluation until additional metrics are released by the State Department of Education to allow us to complete the Board Goals and Strategic Plan Achievement Section. That's typically in October. And moving to the action item and to provide a brief review of how we got here, the board asked the Executive Committee to renegotiate a contract extension and salary increase for the Director of Schools at the April 16th Board Meeting. The Executive Committee met in May and discussed the amendments that are included in the contract before you tonight. The discussed amendments include an extension for Dr. Duke's contract with Murfreesboro City Schools to June 30th, 2028, and provides an increase in salary as negotiated by the Executive Committee. Mr. Campbell, who is unable to be here tonight, did a great job negotiating on behalf of the board, and all revisions he recommended are included in this revised contract. The revised contract also includes some legal and boilerplate language to provide further clarification to various sections of the contract. Based on the information above, I submit this contract extension to the board for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I didn't even get to name it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Let's, let's keep this all night. We have a motion.
I want to be sure nobody else had a chance to steal it between the time that you said that and we got to say what we were going to say.
Mr. Settles, it is absolutely possible. With that being said, is there any discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Moore.
Ms. Bush, you called each of us individually to talk to us about this. Has there been any change since you made the calls? Any further amendments to what we discussed?
No, no further amendments between that phone call and tonight's presentation.
Thank you.
Any further discussions, questions, or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Dodd.
I just want to say you're wonderful, and we are very thankful and blessed to have you.
Well, it seems as though we're heading this way. Anything else from anyone else?
I was going to make a comment, but Karen has already kind of stolen that from me. But I do want to say, every time I get an opportunity, I'm going to say that Dr. Duke was my first choice from the beginning to the end when we had to replace or get a new director. And so far, I am 10 for 10 for Dr. Duke. And every year, it just gets better and better. I'll just say it like that. And I really appreciate the work, the hard work that Dr. Duke has put in. His insight, his direction has been top-notch throughout the community, not just educators, but in the community overall. I'm talking about Murfreesboro City and Rutherford County. And I think it is so insightful of us to say, let's make sure that we keep him, so we got a hooks in him real good. So, thank you, Dr. Duke, for entering into another contract with us. We appreciate and look forward to even more gooder stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Anyone else?
I'd like to see that Administrator Survey result come up a little bit.
From 4.96.
I did double check the math on that. I was, I was concerned.
Mathematically, I don't know if you can do it. But seriously, Dr. Duke, we, we all appreciate what you do for us every day. And the one thing that you may hold back on is letting the board know what we can do for you.
Yes.
And advice for a situation where you may need to reach out to us. Feel free to do that anytime. I think you will, but make it a part of your plan that you're going to pull up, pull our strings when we need to be pulled.
That's right.
Okay?
Well, I'll just say it's a great honor to serve. I'd say this is definitely the best job I've ever had. And a large part of that is because I work with 14 principals who care more about kids than anything else. And they just want to do a good job with a central office team that just wants to do good things for kids and a board that just wants to do good things for kids. And when you have principals, a central office staff, and a board, that that's what their primary motive is, then it makes my job easier and easier. So, I appreciate the confidence the board's put in me. And I appreciate the goodwill of the principals and their willingness to work with us. We have a great district, and I'm just really proud to be associated with it.
And folks, he's modest, too. Any further questions, comments, or laurel wreaths of honor?
I call for the question.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there is none. The motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Duke. Next, we have communications from Ms. Lisa Trail.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And congratulations, Dr. Duke. We're glad to keep you. I just have a few announcements to wrap up the school year. So, I want to start off by saying congratulations to Overall Creek Elementary and Ms. Jenny Ortiz and her team on receiving their STEAM re-designation. If you remember, Overall Creek was one of the first schools, elementary schools to get that STEM slash STEAM designation by the state. And so, they were just up for it, and they have now received their re-designation. So, congratulations to that team. Born Learning Academy is going to be having a summer addition. It'll start next week at Northfield Elementary. It's a partnership that we have with United Way, and it's for parents who have children before they get to kindergarten. So, anyone under the age of kindergarten can attend. We are accepting those applications to attend now. And again, that can be found at United Way's website. And we also recently just celebrated our teachers and our staff who have chosen to retire. We hope they come back as subs or maybe more. But, we did have that ceremony for them, and I just want to once again say thank you to them for the hard work, their dedication to our students, their dedication to our school district. They, Dr. Duke, can you remember how many out years we had?
In the room, it was almost 500 years of service.
And that was just the ones who were able to attend. Yeah. So, just amazing. And that's all of my communications, but I need to turn it over to Dr. Duke.
Oh.
Well, it's Best of MCS time.
And ladies and gentlemen, this is one of my favorite moments that we have, an opportunity to discuss what makes Murfreesboro City Schools the absolute best. And with that, Dr. Duke.
Well, good evening again, board. And I am excited tonight to recognize two individuals who have been nominated to receive our Best of MCS recognition. These two individuals both bring a depth of knowledge and passion to their job that is clearly seen by others who are blessed to work with them on a daily basis. So, first, I am pleased to introduce Ms. Kim Nelson. Ms. Nelson currently teaches, I'm going to ask her to join me at the podium, currently teaches 5th grade math at Black Fox Elementary School. She has just completed her 28th year of education. Wait for it, with all 28 of those years being at Black Fox.
Wow.
Yes, right.
Awesome.
Ms. Strevel told me that she is truly woven into the fabric of that school. And although Kim has been here for 28 years, what I loved about this nomination when I read it is that it was written by someone who was brand-new to our district that nominated her for this honor. The colleague who nominated her told us that from day one, Kim has gone out of her way to be helpful. She works tirelessly to help students learn and engage them in multiple ways. Ms. Nelson heads up the family night, math night at Black Fox Elementary, and was always so organized and ready to share. They had about 100 families that night who participated, and all because of Kim's efforts, they walked away with multiple resources to be used at home to boost, boost math and understanding and practice. The teacher who nominated her continued, "I have personally been blessed by her work ethic and devotion to education by being her peer at Black Fox." "I've only known Kim for a short time," she said, "but I am sure others at Black Fox would agree. Her efforts are endless, as her positive energy is." Ms. Nelson told me that she enjoys helping students grow and reach their full potential. She said, "The joy that lightbulb moment brings to her students is something that continues to put a smile on her face, and knowing she helped turn on that lightbulb is so very rewarding." She also loves watching and listening to students who have grasped a skill and then reaches out to teach others who are still struggling. And she said, "As a day, as an added bonus, those daily hugs, high-fives, and morning dance moves are all the relationships that are built." Her principal, Ms. Strevel, agrees with the blessing that Ms. Nelson is, and says that Kim is just absolutely amazing. She gives so much of herself to the entire Black Fox community and so deserving of this honor. Kim, we are so grateful for the difference you make for your students and for the entire Black Fox and MCS community, and we are so honored to recognize you as our Best of MCS tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Duke and board, and Ms. Strevel. You almost had me in tears there. But I am truly blessed to work for this district for 28 years, and at the best school, too, Black Fox. I am thankful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Oh, don't walk away yet. I've got a question. Oh, and this is rare. What made you decide to be a teacher?
I think at a young age. I had two brothers and two sisters, and growing up, we would just play school, and I was always the teacher, making worksheets and doing things. You know, back then, we didn't have all that technology. So, you know, we did all those things, and ever since a young age, I always wanted to. And Murfreesboro City Schools took a chance on me 28 years ago. I actually am from the north. I went to school in Wisconsin and decided I wanted to relocate south, where it's a little bit warmer.
Well, thank you for everything you've done, all the lives you've changed and the impact you've had on our city. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
No further questions. You, you can go.
And a shout out to her husband, Herman, who's with us tonight, too. I've had the pleasure of working with Herman, actually, in a surrounding district, but he's also a former MCS employee, a great family all the way around. Our second Best of MCS recognition tonight goes to one of our amazing school social workers, Heather Anderson. I'm going to ask Ms. Anderson to join me at the podium, please. Ms. Anderson has been in education for 13 years, again, with all 13 of those years being here in MCS. In her role as a school social worker, she is tasked with breaking down barriers for students and families so that they can be prepared to learn and grow academically. Her work reminds us every day that our students receive so much more than ELA math and science instruction in our buildings. She was nominated by a school counselor, who told me this. She said, "I've had the privilege of working with Ms. Heather Anderson for six years, and over the past six years, she has worked tirelessly to serve the school and community, from helping our unhoused students and families locate community resources, all the way to continuously advocating for our high-needs student population. Ms. Anderson consistently collaborates with stakeholders at the school level and at the central office, all while having a smile on her face. She makes sure the students and families' needs are seen and heard, and she will advocate with a joyful heart. I could not think of someone who represents the Best of MCS more than Ms. Anderson. She and the other school social workers in our district make Murfreesboro City Schools a better place every day because of their presence. And I want to say personally, I know that anyone who has worked with Heather will echo the comments about the consistent smile on her face and the joyful heart. Ms. Anderson said that a few things, said to me that few things compare to the experience of that look on a child's face when they come in the door defeated and leave empowered, all because someone took time to listen and make them feel seen and known. She continued by saying, "I love getting to stand behind the shadows of a family and watch them rise from their hardship. There isn't a day that goes by that I don't feel privileged to be allowed to be a school social worker in the city, thanks to the social worker team and school staff who make me feel supported and valued. It really is the best opportunity to get to serve here." Amanda Adams from our Student Services Department said that Heather has an unwavering passion for supporting all students and families. Families trust Heather and allow her to walk beside them during their most difficult times. Ms. Anderson, I cannot echo any of those words better, and I want to say on behalf of a grateful district, congratulations on this honor. Thank you for representing the Best of MCS, and thank you for advocating so fiercely for our families. We're so proud to have you here.
Thank you so much. I really, really, I, I think it's a privilege to work here every day. It's an opportunity. So, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Duke, I believe you're, you're back up at bat with Spotlight on Education.
Yes, and I'm going to ask Ms. Tamara Cosby from Overall Creek to join me, and I think she has a student with her, Ms. Verena Bochter. We are so glad, even though school's out, to have a student and a teacher with us tonight. I did ask Ms. Cosby, I said, "Man, your Director of Schools is making you come to a board meeting the first day of summer vacation," but we appreciate her being here. But we are so honored tonight to recognize the work of several students who participated in a recent STEM Expo event hosted by the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network for students in 5th through 12th grade. This is open to middle and high school students, so placing in this competition is truly remarkable. And I'm pleased to recognize their sponsor, Ms. Cosby, to tell a little bit about their honors and their awards, and introduce her student to us.
Sounds great. So, we have, I'm going to introduce the other ones that are not here first. We have Ava Austin and Alice Simmons, and they created a dog bed rug, which was a dog bed on one side and a rug on the other because they were concerned that their dog was curling up on their rug and not being able to be cozy, so they could flip it over to make it a rug when they were waiting for their people to come back. And they won first place in agricultural STEM and third place overall for 5th and 6th grade. And then Verena Bochter and Ruth Vasika created safe math bath bombs, and they said that they wanted people to learn more math facts. And so, they created them inside the math bomb, the bath bombs. Very proud of them. They did win second place overall in 5th and 6th grade and second place STEAM Research for 5th and 6th grade.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
We're so proud of Ms. Cosby and the group she's leading there over at Overall with those STEM Expos. So, thank you for, I know that she didn't have to take her students there. That was something she elected to do. So, thank you, Ms. Cosby, and congratulations to all the students for their great work.
Congratulations. That's absolutely incredible. Keep it up. I, I know you're going places. We'll see you again. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. As per my notes, no one has signed up. There are no public comments to be made at this time. Oh, except for by me. Uh-oh, I'm about to be in trouble. My two-and-a-half-year-old daughter, who's should be asleep right now, I'm fairly certain is terrorizing her mother and making her watch this. So, Saoja Blair, I love you. Daddy will be home soon. I hope soon, Mr. Settles.
You got to call that.
Next, we have our consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Moving on to our action items, looks like we've got an approval of the 2024-2025 Board Meeting Calendar. Dr. Trey Duke?
Yes, tonight, we're presenting the proposed 2024-2025 Board Meeting Schedule for approval. The calendar continues to follow meetings being held on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of the majority of most months, with locations split between the Council Chambers at City Hall and the Murfreesboro City Schools Administrative Offices. The 3rd and 5th Tuesday are scheduled for October due to fall break, and the 5th Tuesday is utilized in April due to budget work sessions. The calendar also includes two budget workshops in August and a school board retreat on Saturday, July 25th. This mirrors this year's current calendar, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, who wants it? We'll give it to Ms. Moore. Any discussion? Questions, comments, good jokes? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, the motion carries. Dr. Duke, looks like we're up to the approval of the contract for the paint, and Mitchell Nelson.
Actually, the first one we're looking at is the approval for the contract to the Discovery School painting. This cooperative purchasing agreement pursuant to the terms and pricing of Sumner County Contract for Painting Services is submitted to the board for approval. State statute allows for local education agencies to engage in cooperative purchase based on the same terms of a legally bid initiated by another LEA. Centel Brothers will provide the paint, materials, and services to paint the exterior of the Discovery School. The total cost of the project is $77,895, and will be paid from the general purpose budget. We are approving the contract now, but painting will most likely not begin until after the school year begins in the fall.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any questions, comments?
Just clarification for me. Maybe, maybe I'm off track.
Yes, Mr. Ballard.
Mine does say approval contract of Mitchell Nielsen, and didn't you just mention Discovery getting?
I skipped one. That's on me.
Oh, okay.
Hundred percent.
On the agenda.
Yeah. Don't tell Butch.
We have, yes, we have two contracts for painting tonight.
We'll shut down and edit that.
Absolutely. We'll just tell them in the back.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And those that oppose, the motion carries. Now, the paint contract for Mitchell Nielsen.
Yes, this cooperative purchase agreement is also pursuant to the terms and pricing of the Sumner County Contract mentioned in the last item, and is for painting services for classrooms in the main and exterior buildings at Mitchell Nelson Elementary. The total cost of this project is $70,570. It's paid out of the general purpose budget, and it also is for the paint, materials, and services with Centel Brothers. This work will begin this summer and is scheduled to be completed prior to the school year starting.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. A second?
Second.
Mr. Ms. Moore, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, is this the entire interior?
It is just the, the interior classrooms is this first phase that we'll do before the school year starts. You will almost definitely see another come back to you in the fall for the hallways. But for timing purposes, we wanted to get the classrooms done before students came back, so teachers could set their classrooms up, and then we'll probably most likely come back, Mr. Bartsch, probably fall break time, to get the rest of the hallways done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, the motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the cooperative purchase agreement with Palmer Hamilton LLC. Dr. Duke?
Yes, Palmer Hamilton will provide new furniture and tailored graphics and design pursuant to specifications provided for Hobgood and John Pittard Elementary Schools cafeteria. These goods and services will be provided under the same terms and the same price as provided in the Sourcewell Contract. The proposed timeline for Hobgood Elementary's cafeteria redesign will begin on September 6th, and then the John Pittard will begin shortly thereafter. The total cost for these two redesigns is $283,717.50, and will be paid for from the school nutrition budget, and we are recommending approval as presented.
The chair will entertain a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. A second?
Second.
Mr. Ballard, thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, and the motion carries. Dr. Duke, it looks like we're moving on to the approval of the addendum to the ABM Agreement.
Yes, we are seeking to revise our agreement with ABM through an amendment to the original January 2023 agreement. This amendment will extend the current agreement through June 30th, 2025. It also allows for additional ABM summer services during June 2024 to serve, service summer school, and it provides services for recoding the gym floors at Overall and Scales. This amendment also reflects the prices that went into effect in April 2024. The total cost of the ABM Agreement for 24-25 school year is $2,895,421, and that amount was approved in our FY '25 budget. The additional cost for the summer cleaning services during June 2024 is $30,681. And again, that is specifically for summer school, and is paid for out of the summer school grant, and the cost for recoding the two gym floors is $8,857, and that will be paid for from the GP budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and we are recommending approval.
The chair will entertain a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any questions or comments or clarifications?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Moore.
Um, so a couple of questions. So, the first one, so we had a budget for our, our use of ABM this year for cleaning the schools. Did we just not anticipate summer school for that, or do we have more sites for summer school? Why the increased costs for summer school?
When we looked... When we looked, we started looking, and when we got the summer school budget a while back, that was an approvable expense, and we reached out to ABM. One of the things we saw last year is, again, we know that in June, our custodians start cleaning, doing the floors, all of that work that has to be done over the summer. Last year, they were doing that, and they were doing, trying to keep up with just having 1,100 students in the buildings for summer school. So we began having the conversations about hiring additional custodians just to do summer school during the month of June. When we got our allocation for the state for the summer school grant and saw that wasn't allowable expense, we reached out at that point. So that part is not coming out of our general purpose budget, it's coming out of the grant from the state for summer school. So we wanted to make sure that we could, had the funds for that and that it was approvable.
Okay, and then my second question, I think the board, we've all had some comments come in just today about ABM and our contract and how things are going, so I just wonder, I know we, we made this change because we were having some problems staffing with cleaning, and so how is, how are things going with ABM?
Perfect. So they report on a monthly basis. Mr. Bartsch is our contact with ABM, he meets regularly with them. I don't know if Mr. Bartsch, there's any comments you want to add. I will say, we do a monthly, what they call a report card grade with every school, where the principals can go in and fill out a report card for that. Right now, last month, our last average was 88.07. We want to be above 90, and, and that's what we're looking at. And they meet with us, they go through that, they identify schools where we're not at that threshold we want to be. I'll also say we're sitting at 91% staffed, so we, we know we still have some openings, those are positions that turn over quite a bit, as you can imagine. Before we went with ABM, we were dealing with those same issues, and I think it's just something we're continuing to work through. Mr. Bartsch, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but again, they are, they have been incredibly responsive to us when we ask questions and we meet with them, we ask, and I think, I will continue to say, I know we've had our struggles. Mr. Bartsch is really good about responding to those, but I still feel like we are in a better place than where we would be if we were trying to manage this on our own.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
If I may.
Yes.
With this additional work, do we have enough staff with ABM to handle the, the summer school in addition to redoing all of our schools?
So they're looking to hire 12 more employees for the summer just to handle summer school, which is that daily, because again, we're giving them, we're giving our students breakfast and lunch every day in summer school, because that generates quite a bit of trash, there's spills, there's all of that. So they're looking to hire 12 additional staff just for that June summer school month.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
So, you know, I hate to be the downer here, but if they're having a hard time getting regular staff, how are they going to come up with 12 extras? I'm just curious. I think that's what Ms. Long was getting at.
Yeah, and so.
I just don't see how this is going to happen.
You know, and I'll say, staffing for all of us is a concern. I mean, we've talked about that, but, and we, that's something we've already talked about watching very carefully, that if we're going to budget this additional money and use this system money, that we actually can tie that to additional staff who have been hired before we look at that. But I do know, this is a challenge, not just that we're facing, that we're all facing, so our hope is to be incredibly responsive to our schools, but like I said, they have been very good to meet with us, to look at things when we give them priority spots, for them to get in there when we're made aware of situations, so we can get in there and address them as quickly as possible. But I will say, we've had that conversation about making sure if we budget this money, that we actually can say, these are the additional staff that were hired, and did they fulfill their?
Are they confident that that will happen? Do they feel confident that they can get 12 more?
I'm going to turn to Mr. Bartsch.
We're going to make you get one way or the other, you know, you try to stay there.
That's right.
Good evening.
So what happens during the summer is, during the waxing of the floors and the cleaning of the floors, sometimes those, they have a transition. Some of the people that work during the year don't do the waxing. So typically in the summer, I learned this just a few weeks ago, ABM might have kind of a layoff situation for those that don't want to do the floors. So those people that would do the floors, who are typical custodians, are going to hopefully transition into those 12 summer school spots.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Yes, Mr. Ballard.
Mr. Bartsch, do they, do they have a supervisor in, on site here in Murfreesboro?
There's, yes, sir, there's two.
Okay.
They have two, two, two gentlemen that do that.
So they report every day to work, just dedicated to Murfreesboro City Schools?
That's correct, yes, they're, they're, they're our account. It's our account, yes.
Good, okay, thank you.
And again, Mr. Bartsch, what was the grade? Was it 88. what? I mean, I'm not, the, we talked about a grade.
ABM wants to be above 85%, and they've been, Dr. Duke shared they were 88 the past, the last time they had it, last month.
So we're not dissatisfied with what they're doing at all?
No, it's, it's just, the balance is, is different locations, different effort, work effort, is what causes some of the scores to fluctuate a little bit.
Because I would suggest to them, if they have any more trouble hiring, especially for the summer, that you have EAs or other people that are not working in the summertime that may want to take on some extra work.
That's, that's been, that's been mentioned.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I know in, in Metro, well, years ago, when Metro did their own stuff, that in the summertime, EAs, teachers, anybody, they wanted to work, they painted classrooms and everything, so the, the labor force is out there, it's not as bad as it sounds when we're just talking about that summer thing, because there's, there's places to look. I'm not volunteering, I'm just saying.
We got a hallway or two you can paint.
I will say, i- it is an area that we take incredibly serious.
Yeah.
Anyone that's worked in a school knows, if you don't, if, if, if the school, if you feel like the school is not taking care of it, affects everything within the building, we are incredibly aware of that, and so when we get those concerns, again, Mr. Bartsch is very quick to pick up the phone and call and say, what's going on here? How do we rectify this? There are several meetings I've been called into just for, to continue to emphasize that message, we have to be good with this. And again, I think, getting, being at 91% staff, actually, we're feeling really good about, we want to be at a 100%, we're shooting for that, but I think a lot of the issues we have is when we have those staff that are out, and, and we have some great custodians that are working overtime, serving other buildings where they may be down some, so our custodians we have are doing a great job, for sure.
And Dr. Duke, do you, would you like to tell us where we were before we made this shift and how things have improved overall?
Well, I can say, I can say before going anecdotally, I don't have the data, I will say, anecdotally, it's, I'll be honest, one of the reasons we went, because it was all we were dealing with. I mean, we had teams, all they were doing were trying to hire custodians and trying to manage this, and that's been the big lift that ABM has taken off from us, is managing those personnels, because it is a position that turns over relatively quickly, and so we would have, and, and honestly, we had principals that were spending their time hiring custodians, and they couldn't do instructional work because they were trying to hire custodians for their building. We do have, as Mr. Bartsch said, two supervisors that work our account, they have our schools divided in half. One of those was our supervisor when we were managing it ourself, ABM hired him to do it, so it's been a good continuity of service. Again, but I don't want, I don't ever want to, to say, to sell a false picture. We know we have continued improvements we're going to do here, I feel like we're in a better place, I know we're in a better place, but we also know we got to, this is a place we've got to keep working, and for what it's worth, they've been very good to work with us as we express our concerns.
Thank you for that. Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
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 And all those that oppose? The motion carries. Moving on to the approval of the budget for the amendment for stronger connections, Dr. Duke.
I think we need to back up one.
I was going to come back to that, honestly.
Okay.
Believe me.
Okay.
Approval of the disciplinary hearing authority, Dr. Duke.
Board Policy 6.317 requires that the school board appoint a disciplinary hearing authority to hear, hear the appeals of suspensions, remands, and expulsions. Policy states that the board shall appoint no more than seven members to the DHA, which shall include three school system administrators and at least two licensed employees. The director of school shall appoint a chairman for the members appointed. We are recommending the following individuals to serve as the disciplinary hearing authority for the 24-25 school year. That's Mr. Rocha, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Supports, Ms. Adams, our Coordinator of Behavioral Supports, Ms. Fairchild, our Director of Special Education, if the child receives special education services, Dr. Lewis, Principal of Bradley Academy, Ms. Spencer, Principal of Armistice Eagle, and Mr. Bryson, Principal of Mitchell Nielsen. We do have an alternative administrator if the DHA is hearing an appeal of a student at a school where the principal is a committee member, and that's Ms. Oakley, who is the Principal of Scales Elementary. We are recommending approval of this for the 24-25 school year. I will say, since I have been here, we have never had to utilize the DHA, but we, we need to have one in place in case that situation was to arise.
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All that oppose? The motion carries. I believe now we can move on to the approval of the budget amendment for stronger connections, Dr. Duke.
Yes, we have several budget amendments in front of you tonight, as we do our, some year-end cleanup work, but the first one here is the Stronger Connections Grant. We are seeking approval for the budget amendment to decrease medical insurance by 3,000 and increase other fringe benefits by 3,000. This budget decrease is due to budgeting the actual expenses from the estimated expenses we made when we wrote the grant. This change in expenditure will not have any impact on the overall program.
I move for appro, approval, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose? And the motion carries. Next, an approval of the budget of the Amendment Career Ladder CEO.
This amendment budgets new revenue for career ladder for FY24 to align with the state's end-of-year career ladder report. This will recognize new revenue of $1,146 and expenses in the corresponding lines for career ladders, social security, state retirement, and Medicare. We are recommending approval of this budget amendment, which increases revenues and corresponding expenditures by $1,146.
Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ballard beat you to it. Any discussions, comments, or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, we can do it better than that. Aye. All those that oppose? The motion carries. Next, the approval of the budget, the Amendment FY24 ESP.
Yes, sir, this amendment is to transfer previously approved funds within the same major budget categories for year-end accounting. It transfers a total of $25,500 to recognize changes in preliminary salary and benefit budget estimates to projected year-end actuals. This includes increases in state retirement and life insurance and decreases to other salary and wages. Each increase is sustained through transfers within the category and no major changes to the fiscal budget and no changes to our operate, to our program.
And we're recommending approval?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles, a second.
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Settles.
It's a procedural question. If we have budget amendments that do not result in a change in the actual budget, no money changes, can they not be handled as a group? Just asking a question. In other words, we've got one, two, three budget amendments, removing money from one line item in the same category to another line item in another category, we have another budget item which is identical to the, that same thing, just in a different category. Can they be handled as a bundle, or do we have to handle them each one individually?
I wish I could tag over here, but no, I, let me look into it. My gut feeling, which is not legal, is, is that it has to be an action item, but I will look into it for our next board agenda, and if it can be consent, we'll consider that for those smaller items.
Because I didn't even know if there was such thing as action item for a bundle of things, you know, like bundle your home and auto insurance?
I have seen boards, I have seen boards do it that way, but our city charter, I'm not sure how it would function within our city charter, those requirements, Mr. Shackleton doesn't know either. I was trying to tag teams and my else.
Pretty good with the, the city council, so I think that, that strike while the iron's hard.
I'll look into that, Mr. Settles, and then I'll come back with that.
There are some concerns of transparency and, and public discourse and getting the information out in, in a way that's digestible, so I would proceed with caution, but yes, please look into it if you would, please.
But once you get it, let's put our foot on the gas, then we can go.
Is that in the form of a motion? You can strike that.
Not yet.
Oh.
Call for the question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose? And the motion carries. Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir, the next one, we are looking at the approval of the budget amendment for the FY24 GP Budget Interest Revenue. This budget amendment actually adds an additional $165,000 in interest earned through our checking account and $278,000 of unbudgeted TESA State Outcome Funding to align with our year-end actual revenue. The expenditures for these increases in revenue are found in our supportive maintenance and plant, other contract services, repair of buildings, and maintenance and repair of equipment. So the budget amendment increases revenues and corresponding expenditures by $443,072. I do want to point out that the additional interest, we talked about this quite a bit during our budget meetings, we budgeted interest pretty low this year, so we're adding some of this now at the end, and if you remember from our budget meetings, next year, we actually have budgeted our interest significantly higher because it's coming in so much higher, which is a great thing.
The chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Ms. Long, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose? And the motion carries. Dr. Duke, you've got several more on your plate, I'll leave it to you.
That's right. The next one is budget amendment for the FY24 INTER Fund. This is really probably our, our biggest year-end cleanup one. This amendment is to transfer previously approved funds within the same budget categories to balance each account for year-end. The amendment transfers a total of $575,925 to recommend, to recognize changes in our preliminary salary and benefit estimates to our actual year-end actuals. Increases include benefit categories, educational assistance, adjustment to salaries, to the actual cost from the preliminaries. Each increase is sustained through transfers within each category, and there's no change, major changes to the fiscal budget and no changes to our programming.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any discussions or comments?
Question.
Yes, please, sir.
As we're going through these, and with Mr. Settles' question making good sense to me, it is, do we have a situation where we cannot make a move from one bucket to another? I know, for instance, capital can't be mixed with general operating and such, but it seems like we've, I don't know what rules guide, one, we can take it from one bucket and go to another bucket, but it seems like it's hard to follow what the rules are on that.
So the board has the right to approve any move that the staff comes and recommends. I'll tell you what our practice is. Our practice is, we try and keep personnel, salaries and benefits to salaries and benefits, and we try and keep non-personnel items to non-personnel, and we always try and keep it within that major category. So a lot of these, like, for instance, much of these is, we make estimates on the insurance people are going to take in June, or like this past May, we're making estimates of what insurance we think they're going to take, because we have so many different plans. Some may choose fringe benefits. So when Mr. Owens and Ms. Prater sit down and do the budget, they're putting what they think is there, and then at this time of the year, what we're doing is just really trying to clean that up now that we know who took insurance. Of course, that can change in January when they make different elections. We can move, and sometimes we do have to move, from, for instance, instructional supplies and material where we may have extra money and put that in some insurance line items if they choose a insurance that's more expensive than we plan on, but we always try and keep salaries and benefits to the same, non-personnel to the same. And if we, our big one is we always try and stay in that major category. So special ed stays in special ed, attendance stays in attendance, and of course, if we ever budget or change outside of that category, that's when we also have to take it to city council for their approval.
Well, thank you for that. I'll just look at it sometimes I get cross-eyed, like I take three Chinese mathematicians to figure out what we're doing.
This time of year, there's definitely, there's definitely a lot of, like I said, just kind of cleanups here at the end of the year, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Any further questions, clarifications, or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All that oppose? The motion carries. Dr. Duke?
The next one is the approval of the FY '24 Paid Parental Leave Federal Budget Amendment. If you recall, the state passed a new law last year allowing six weeks of paid maternity leave for, or paternity leave for teachers. So this amendment budgets the new revenue from that paid parental leave for FY '24. So this is the state actually reimbursing us for the day, the six weeks of leaves that our teachers took. This budget amendment applies just to those who are paid out of the federally funded line items, and it is for $23,961 of new revenue and corresponding expenditures. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and we're recommending approval.
Mr. Chairman, up.
Mr. Settles?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussions, questions, or comments?
I have a comment or a question. When will we get reimbursed?
So we've already, we've already been reimbursed. That $23,000 for federal represents quarter one and quarter two of the school year. That's roughly about 14 educator, well, that and the next budget amendment, which is our general purpose budget, that's for quarter one and quarter two. It's about 14 educators, or it is 14, it's not about. By the end of the year, we will have roughly 30 employees who we will be reimbursed for those six weeks of paid leave.
Okay, so we, we get reimbursed like the next semester?
It's by quarter, so today, in fact, I approved the report to the state for quarter three, so.
Okay, calendar quarter, not.
Calendar, yes, sorry, calendar quarter. And they require quite a bit of documentation for that. Obviously, it's a significant amount of money, and so our HR department, under Ms. Johnson, prepares documentation, sends it to Ms. Prater in finance, she does the reports, we submit them. Oftentimes, it's returned, and they want more information and want us to provide some additional information, which is what happened today, so we provide that, and then we resubmit it, and then once the state signs off on it, then we get reimbursed.
Okay. I was just wondering, because at one point, at some point in time, we talked about this, we had not seen any money.
That's right.
And, but we have seen some money.
We have seen some money. We are very pleased, and that's what we're budgeting tonight.
It's rolling in.
That's good news.
And with good news, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose? The motion carries. Dr. Duke?
Our next one is the approval of the second paid parental leave, and this is the same as our last budget item for reimbursement for the Paid Parental Leave Act. This corresponds to our general purpose budget. It's for $245,000 of new revenue with corresponding expenditures. And again, these expenditures go to coverage such as teachers, career ladders, state retirement, and contracts with private agencies, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
The chair will entertain a motion?
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Questions, comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? And the motion carries. Dr. Duke?
The next budget amendment is for the IDEA, which is Federal Special Education Budget, Part B, for Extended School Year, or ESY. We are seeking approval for a budget amendment to the FY '24 Special Education Funding Source. This grant amendment of $5,000 is to provide extended school year services for additional learning, supporting our special education students to address their emerging skills in academic areas, as well as to provide speech and language services for the month of June 2024. Funds are being transferred from savings found in the instructional material and supplies line item. The reason this budget amendment is needed is when we make the budget beginning of the year, at that point, we may not know which students require ESY services. At this point of the year, all those IEP teams have made the decision, and so we need to make this adjustment to make sure we can provide services. I do want to specify, this is not summer school. This is specific, extended school year services for students who require their IEPs to be met.
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? And the motion carries. Dr. Duke?
Our next budget amendment is for the FY '24 21st Century Community Learning Grant that is done through our ESP program. This grant amendment of $28,497 is to rebudget savings in our transportation line items, and this funding reallocation will be used to help fund staff and certified salaries for summer programming for the month of June at Bradley, Black Fox, Kason Lane, Hobgood, John Pittard, Reeves Rogers, Mitchell Nielsen, and Northfield. This change in expenditures will have no overall impact on the program, and the reason we're doing this amendment is we have to have the 21st Century Community Learning Grant spent or encumbered by June 30th of 2024. As I said, we had extra money in those transportation line items, and we definitely don't want to lose that money, so we want to rebudget those so we can spend that money accordingly before the grant deadline.
The chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Ballard, a second?
Second.
Ms. Don, questions, comments, or concerns other than we like the money we're owed? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? And the motion carries. Dr. Duke?
The final budget amendment for tonight, we're glad to be at this point, is for the FY '24 Indigent Children's Fund. This amendment budgets new revenue for the Indigent Children's Fund. The revenue will be recorded in contributions and gifts and expenditures for other charges. The donation was for $1,730. It will have no effect on fund balance, but we do want to say thank you to the donor who made that contribution to our Indigent Children's Care Fund so we can make sure our students have what they need.
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any questions or comments? I suppose I will. What an incredible gesture, what an incredible symbol. These aren't just merely thoughts and ideas. These are practical changes. These are things that happen to young people in our city and makes their lives different. These things matter. It matters to us, and we're so very grateful for that. So that's my comment, this is sincere gratitude and thanks.
You're here.
And if I can add, Mr. Richardson, that our Indigent Children's Fund is so important because it provides for our students things that we can't provide with tax dollars or with our regular allocation, so the community stepping up and making those contributions, it makes a real difference.
Thank you very, very much. The chair will entertain a motion?
Motion is there.
I'd like to get it twice something. It was just so good. That being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? And the motion carries. It looks as though, Dr. Duke, you can take a breath for a moment as we will move to counsel, Ms. Lauren Bush, in the Approval of Board Policy 4.603 Promotion and Retention on the First Reading.
Changes to this board policy are made to clarify that appeal rights provided to parents or guardians for students subject to retention do not apply to students who are retained pursuant to the state law requiring retention in third and fourth grade based on performance on state testing. There are separate statutory appeal rights for those students subject to retention under the state law, and we have a separate board policy for those appeals, and Board Policy 4.603-1. Our recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 4.603 on first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. The chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Questions, comments, concerns? Clarifications? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All those that oppose? And the motion carries. Ms. Bush, it looks like we've got approval of Board Policy 5.303-1, Leave for Religious Observances, on second reading.
A substantive change was made to this board policy recommendation between first and second readings. The phrase "or sick leave" as allowed by Board Policy 5.302 was added between readings. It is now presented for adoption by the board on second and final reading.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. The chair will entertain a motion?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. A second?
I'll second.
I'm going to give that one to Ms. Don. Any discussion, thoughts, concerns, questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose? And the motion carries. Ms. Bush, it looks like we're going to approve, well, boy, that sounds like we're going to hell of ourselves. Approval of Board Policy 5.305, Family and Medical Leave on First Reading.
This proposed change would transition our current FMLA leave procedures from a fixed calendar year to a rolling 12-month period measured backward from the date the employee uses any FMLA leave. Notice of the potential change was discussed at the March 12th, 2024 board meeting, and notice was also provided to employees on March 28th, 2024. The staff recommendation is to approve changes to Board Policy 5.305 on first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. The chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Questions, comments, clarifications, or concerns?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
To be clear, this is a more accurate or fairer way, I think, to administer this FMLA policy. Am I correct?
Yet most school districts do it this way because of the way that we are set up.
Yes.
We operate on a fiscal year, a school calendar year, and then a calendar year, so this will make it a little easier for administrative team to administer those leaves throughout the school year.
Thank you.
Excellent question. Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? And the motion carries. Ms. Bush?
Substantive changes were made to Board Policy 5.600 between first and second reading. Additional language was added to clarify staff expectations based on the discussion of the board at the last meeting, and expectations related to staff social media use was also added between readings. It is now presented for adoption on second and final reading.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Second?
Second.
Ms. Long, thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns, or clarifications?
I'd just like to say thank you for the additional language and the clarifications. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. I believe it was substantive, prudent, and appropriate. Anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? And the motion carries. Ms. Bush?
Substantive changes were also made to Board Policy 5.701 between the first and second reading. Additional language was added to address substitute teacher training and clarify the ethical requirements of substitute teachers. These were both added to this policy recommendation between readings based on discussion by the board. It is now presented for adoption on second and final reading.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. The chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Don. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? And the motion passes. Ms. Bush?
Board Policy 6.203 is updated to provide clarification that city limits within the policy refers to the corporate city limits that are established by the City of Murfreesboro City Council. This policy is also updated to remove the section relating to students from military families so that we can add this language into a separate policy. The staff recommendation will be to approve changes to Board Policy 6.203 on first reading.
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose? And the motion carries. Ms. Bush?
Changes are recommended to Policy 6.316 to remove the remandment as a discipline offense and to rename the policy to clarify the discipline options available in our school district. Language was also added to include Section 504 as a consideration in disciplinary actions. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 6.316 on first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. The chair will entertain a motion?
I move for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Discussion, questions, or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just one, to be sure, we no longer, remand is stricken from the policy, and we don't have a second policy for remand, do we?
No, we actually, that's not an option, because we don't have an alternative school within our district. To the extent that we make a recommendation for alternative placement, it's typically done through an IEP or 504 plan.
Thank you for that clarification. No further questions?
Thank you. Ms. Bush, I do have a question. As I'm, as I'm reading over what, descriptor code 6.306, line two, it says, "A student shall not engage in conduct which causes the disruption or interference with the operation of the school while on school property," and it goes on and so forth. I don't see a definitional section of willful or knowingly or recklessly, and I understand that the 504 language will sort of address those concerns potentially, but is that, is that addressed elsewhere, and I've just not seen it, or is that going to be problematic?
It's not, it's not defined in statute, so that language is taken directly from TCA 49-6-3104, and that is specific to what the district can discipline for when it comes to code of conduct behavior. That is not defined in statute, and a lot of what we do within the school district operates on a preponderance of the evidence standard, where discipline is administered by the school administrator, so it's really subject to a lot of discretion by the school administrator, and the statute recognizes that as well. So I would say, I don't know that we want to define it, I definitely can take it under consideration for second reading, but it is one of those, that statutory language taken directly from the state statute.
I suppose for me, the permissive nature of the language is well-intended, but I fear that those that may not be able to have the requisite intent or may have some sort of diagnosis or deficiency of some kind would fall under the plain language of this, and though discretion is wide, we may have a due process issue or maybe some other concerns. If we could look into that further, that, I would feel more comfortable with that.
I definitely see what you're saying, to the extent that it's identified by an IEP team or a 504 team as necessary if behavior is impeding the child's learning or access to education, that would be something we would address through a functional behavior assessment or a behavior intervention plan, or some additional IEP or 504 goals, depending on the, on the nature and severity of the misbehavior. So that would be something that we could do, but Ms. Fairchild spends a lot of time with our teams explaining those requirements to them, and those are federal requirements that basically says, you know, to the extent a child's identified as a student with a disability, Section 504 and the IDEA provide additional procedural safeguards for those students and parents. And so I think it's also important to remember that our board policy, this board policy lays on top of our Code of Conduct board policy, which we approved on second reading tonight, but the two together, I do think, provide some additional clarification when you read them together.
It certainly filled in some gaps for me as I read through it, and of course, again, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old at home, so sometimes I need all the help I can get. But I suppose there's just a little bit of concern, especially as we start to hear more and more about maybe someone that doesn't have dyslexia, but they may have dyslexic tendencies. Someone may not have an IEP or a 504, but gosh, golly, they're pretty close, and that and that disparate, potential disparate treatment could be problematic. I hope never in this district, but if we could just look into it a little bit more to make me feel better.
Yes, I can, and I will also say too, that our schools do use RTI-2B. I could not tell you what those letters stand for, but I know it has something to do with behavior, and I do know that several of our schools are demonstration schools, they're model schools for that. So, I think the tiered approach is something that we're using in the district as well, but I will get with Amanda Adams and Ken Rocha and that team and come back with some additional changes.
And to be clear, those tiered programs are working exceptionally well for behaviors, for truancy. I'm a chess player, so I'm thinking, once we're all gone, what does this plain language actually say? So, it's a mild concern, but one worth taking up television time for. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, all that oppose, and the motion carries. Ms. Bush?
The recommendation from our staff is to approve Board Policy 6.506. This is a new policy recommendation based on a TSBA model policy that outlines the statutory rights of, and school district obligations to, students from military families. The staff recommendation would be to approve this board policy on first reading.
Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long, questions, comments, concerns, or clarifications? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, and the motion carries. It looks like we've gotten to Mr. Seales' favorite time, and that would be the approval of revenue and expenditure reports. We welcome Mr. Daniel Owens to the podium, welcome and good evening.
Good evening, Board, changing voice anyways. You have my report, I'll hit a few highlights, and then I'll entertain any questions. So, on the budget comparison for this month, we are up almost nine million in income, and we've only exceeded about eight more million in expenses, so that is a good pace we're on. This time last year, we were about five million less, so we are spending more, but we are receiving more. Far as revenue, we are keeping our own property tax, it does look like, excuse me, we're coming in about 13.8 for the year. Local sales tax is at 11.6, but we just did receive a payment for April, or, excuse me, March. That was 1.5, so we've got three more to come. That should put us in around about 17.4, which is over what we budgeted for this coming fiscal year, so that is good news. Outside of that, our saving grace is our business tax, sales tax, interest, and mixed drink. So, good things to look forward to, and I'll be happy to entertain questions.
Any questions from any board member?
No, I just want to comment that the revenue report sounds so good when you give it, because of your accent, I absolutely, I absolutely love it, that's great to me, so I feel better about it.
I'm hoping I'm representing Warren County just fine.
You are doing just fine.
Be nice, Mr. Seales. I've got the accent.
I know, I know, I love it.
We did talk about that a little bit.
Anything other you'd like to add?
Glad to be here.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
We need to-
Do we need to approve the-
Yes, sir, we do.
I move to approve the revenue expenditure report.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long, all, any questions, comments, concerns? Do we want to get him back up there to hear his accent? It's a separate motion, strike that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, and the motion carries. Looks like it's now back to me for reports and information. Really, y'all, this is a refrain that you've heard a lot, this is the coolest job in the world. What a wonderful opportunity to serve children, to work alongside educators and social workers and counselors. It's difficult to learn when you're hungry. It's difficult to learn when you don't know where your head's going to be that night. It's difficult to learn when you're in a household where mental health is a struggle. And so, when we have a safe place, like Murfreesboro City Schools, with such excellent educators, such excellent social workers and staff from central office all the way down, that sees each individual child as a human being deserving of dignity and respect and treated accordingly, we offer them a chance at the brightest of futures. We get to be a part of it every single day. It's absolutely incredible, and it's an honor for me to be up here, standing, rather sitting, in Mr. Campbell's chair. I cannot, maybe because I'm having another daughter in June, I get emotional. It's just an incredible opportunity to change lives that will echo for decades upon decades.
Absolutely.
And so, for everybody that's here, everybody that comes here each time, everybody that's part of the leadership team, everybody that's part of making a child's life better, I just want to thank you. Thank you for everything that you do, thank you for holding us accountable, thank you for being here, thank you for your feedback. What a wonderful, wonderful place to be. And with that-
We have one more thing.
Well, but I'm almost done. Mr. Smith can go to Washington, I can do this all night long. But I hear the Oscar music playing, and I'll just say, thanks, everybody, y'all are great. Enrollment report, Mr. Rocha?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Rocha.
I'm not sure if I should just ask if you have any questions or not after that.
We have more to do.
That's right. All right, well, you have the slides, you have the report in front of you. As usual, I want to remind you, this is the end of Period Eight, so we're looking at May 13 as that closing date. Again, each period is about 20 days. As we go forward, Period Nine, which will be the end of the school year, which will be the next report, so you'll receive, excuse me, the year-end data. Looking at our average attendance percentage, that went up nearly 2%. So we saw an increase, and that is typical for this period of time. As it moves enrollment, we had a decrease of four students. Truancy, we saw an increase from the period, but a 71 student decreased from last year. Chronic absentee rate will continue to drop, we anticipate that to drop a little bit as we go forward to the end of the year as well. Those PTR rates are actually all zero, no changes there on that next slide. As we move forward, the anticipation of Period Nine will be that last tick that we see there. This is our trend between last year and this year as well. Happy to answer any questions.
So we ended the year better on chronic absenteeism and truancy than last year, right? We made some improvements-
Yes.
-on that, that's great. What do you credit, what do you think the-
I think the hard work of our principals, the work of our tiered system. Ms. Bush referenced RTI squared 2B. Looking at that, I think the steps that we've had in place from Tier One to Tier Two, having those meetings, and then turning to Tier Three, where they meet at the central office, we've had a lot of positive impact, where those have not gone forward to a warrant for filing.
And can you briefly, and I do mean briefly, talk about what those tiers look like, and maybe what we're able to ascertain in those tiered meetings that may not be readily apparent in the classroom?
Sure. So the first approach is Tier One, that's universal for all students. That includes your communication, your support, might be attendance programs, incentives, things that are offered to all students. Once they hit the threshold of five days of unexcused and beyond, they hold a second meeting, and the principal calls the parent. They say that we've noticed that you've been out, we'd like to meet with you. They talk about the barriers that are in the way of potentially transportation, could be family circumstances, could be a number of things that we hear from our families across the district. From that, they enter into an agreement, they talk about, here's the things that we want to work and help you with, as far as solutions that they consider, based on that. If they get to the threshold of 10 unexcused absences, those meetings are then potentially recommended to move to me, where Ms. Bush, myself, the principal, our social workers, the school principal, sometimes the counselor, or the attendance secretary join in a meeting, we have another conversation as an additional layer to say, look, we're here to help you, we're here to offer support, what may, what might be new to your circumstance? Is there anything that we haven't considered before we move forward? We're trying to avoid filing that parent warrant, that's the last thing that we want to do. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to get your child to school, because they're a gift each day, and we know that they add benefit. And as we look at those days over time, there's potential days for some students missing up to a year of school, in the seven years that they've been with us.
So would it be fair to say there's a stark difference between folks that just don't send their kids to schools, and those that are going through tragedy, loss, change, and need help in connection with services?
Yes, potentially, and our role is to offer that support. So if there's a family going through tragedy, we look at our counselors, our mental health clinicians, supports of outside services that we're working with as well, just to name a few.
How incredible, thank you.
Thank you.
If I can add, just briefly, I know Mr. Rocha's wrapping up his first year in this role, and he's probably met with more parents this year than he had anticipated. He's done an incredible job being very proactive, meeting with parents, talking with parents, how can we help, how can we support? I think that's, he is exactly right. Major contribution is the work of our principals, but I also think a major contribution is what Mr. Rocha has done this year in doing that. I know it's something we're still focused on, because we know if they're not in school, they cannot learn. And so, we wanted to do that, so he's done a tremendous job this year helping parents overcome some of those true barriers that are impacting their child's attendance.
And to be seen, and then, rather than merely being punished or being served with a warrant, I think that's incredible, and I really appreciate your efforts, and it's bearing fruit, so.
We have a great team.
I love the no-nonsense way, but also the compassion, because we've all had bumps in our lives that we needed help with.
I will just send, it's always about support.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm hesitant, but Dr. Duke, your director's update?
Yes, just a couple of updates. School is out for the summer, congratulations to Ms. Dodd on getting her first day of summer vacation as a teacher, but all of our teachers are enjoying it, but the work is still a lot to be done as we go into the next couple of weeks. Summer school begins next week, which is the third. Ms. Arnett told me today, we have 1,150 students in registered for summer school, which is the largest enrollment we've had, I think, since our first year coming out of COVID that we offered summer school. So we're excited to be able to offer that. We do have teachers for all 1,150 students, which we're also very excited about. They've been through training, I think all those trainings are wrapped up, correct? And we have those students ready to go on Monday, so that'll be an exciting day. If you want to come by and visit any of our summer school locations, reach out to Ms. Arnett, it's definitely going to be worth just popping in and seeing the great things they're doing. This week, in that kind of interim between school year ending and summer school beginning, of course, we're working hard, looking at our third grade retake data. I am going to ask Dr. George, just to kind of very briefly, if you don't mind, giving the board, we can't really talk about data, but I will say, we received test data back last week, the last two full days of school, we were doing retakes for that to make sure every student had that opportunity to be promoted with no restrictions. Dr. George, can you just give a really brief update on how that went, and kind of where we are?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So, last week, we got our raw scores, the state delivered them on the 20th, like they had shared, and then our retake window opened up on the 22nd, so we had two days to retest our students. We administered the retake to 510 students in our district that did not score either that meeting or exceeding expectations level. And just looking at that process, it being online, we had approximately 75 of our students that actually moved up in proficiency, so they were able to move away from having to have any sort of summer school or tutoring requirement. That roughly translated to about 15% of our students that took the retake. And then we also had roughly about 40, approximately, students, right at about 7.5% that actually improved their pathway from being that below, which would have required summer school and tutoring, they moved to approaching. So that also helped them improve their placement and what their promotion pathway is. Dr. Duke, I can't think of anything else?
No, just a huge shout out to Dr. George, the last week of school is a little crazy. Okay, so let's just go, and so, Dr. George, leading with the assistant principals, to getting that done, getting it done well, getting more parents that confidence to say, I can move on to fourth grade with no further restrictions. Of course, we have a good number of those families that are still going to go to summer school, we're going to encourage that, we want them in summer school, if those families want to give that to their students, but really please, and then as we're able to kind of get that data into actual percentages, we'll make sure we report that to the board as soon as we're able to report that stuff. And with that, that is all the updates I have for tonight for the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Any other business to come before this board this evening? Going once, twice, thrice, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And good night. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. We enjoy sharing our love for public education and educators and children, thank you so very much.